I thought he was a judge.
You don't want to turn the lights on.
They were like, I turned them off.
No, but I never. Because I closed the door and locked the.
That was such a great event. It was so well organized. It was just, I felt it. Kids' faces, amazing.
Kids?
I had a good time talking to. I'm talking to. Yes, you guys are really cool.
Did you go in the tank?
Yeah.
I can't believe it.
Tank, I went to police car, I went on the motorcycle. I was a big kid.
But Claire wasn't here. Claire, you didn't come and look at some tanks. She, I do not believe she will be.
Oh, it was so great.
Sports, sports, sports and more sports.
It was great. It was great. My grandson came out and he lost, he just lost his mind. He was like. Four-year-old boy in all those trucks and police cars and fire, oh my God. And the cops were great. They were just so friendly and.
They're always friendly.
Yeah, they're great. They're only friendly when they, not friendly when they close you up. Nine o'clock in the night.
Hold two seconds, I'm just trying to get this started. Come on, internet, turn on for me. There we go.
Well, that's a problem because if this, this doesn't extend to there.
All right, everybody, welcome to the Monday, October 6th, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting. Let's please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Claypool Room.
Together by the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would like to make a motion to open up the public hearing portion of our meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Dorfman. All in favor? Excellent. The first local law we're going to discuss and actually vote on is Proposed Local Law H. 2025, our tree remediation requirements. And this proposed amendment or addition to our code is in lieu of our planting requirements. Sorry, in lieu of planting replacement trees in difficult situations, the building superintendent, in their sole discretion, can allow residents who have substantial and robust trees on their property to donate a set amount, which right now would be $500, set by the village, by the board, for each tree not replanted to a village green refund. This fund will be used to plant trees in the village right-of-way and other village green spaces. Wendy, can you hear me? Am I speaking clear enough? All right, I just want to make sure. Yes, sir.
So the, the proposed amendment from last time was before previous, they've been sort of building superintendent and then going to Board of Trustees, which would be this amendment. Building superintendent's review and any change in the fee would be by resolution. So would that need to be a new local law?
Correct. Excellent. Thank you. We've discussed this ad nauseam, but I will ask the board if they have any questions about this. Anybody?
Actually, I have a question for our counsel. Is the building inspector entitled to set a fee?
The board would set a fee.
Well, it says building inspector or the board.
Just one more. That should, that should be the board that set the fee.
This could be me because I typed this. So, or are you reading the actual law? I'm sorry.
The rule says the building inspector, it says or or, so we're gonna take, get rid of one or.
We're taking, if, let me just read the way I thought it should be clarified and then maybe that, that'll clarify.
That's fine.
It should say, notwithstanding any other requirement with respect to replanning of trees, the building inspector and then we would be removing for the Board of Trustees, shall have the right to require a new replacement and replanning of trees, the payment of a fee as set forth from time to time by resolution of the Board of Trustees. That's, that's the way it should read, so I apologize for that microphone error. That was the plan.
Any other questions, Mr. Smith?
No.
Excellent. Do I have any? Yes, ma'am. For the record, you'll have to give your name and address to our stenographer.
B. Health, UGOT, 25 Dr. Lane. Hi, everyone.
Hi, B.
Hi. I would love to see, from the village of Flower Hill, something about native trees. I think we are cutting down, from what I see in my neighborhood, hundred-plus-year-old oak trees, which support more wildlife and more pollinators than fifty trees elsewhere. And it's devastating for our environment. I would like to see an emphasis or a strong recommendation of changing the list of recommended trees to be very heavily weighted native trees. I think that's in our best interest. I've seen trees that were replaced by, by small flowering trees that have really no benefit. And now in addition, six months later, they're dead. I don't think there's any follow-up in the case of replacing a tree to make sure that it's alive after a reasonable amount of time. I would like to see that added as well.
Well, so actually, to address, I'll address the first part. I can put our village arborist in contact with you. You guys can discuss some recommendations to add or remove certain trees because we have a, an approved tree list already. And we can, and we can change that list and I'm more than happy to make additions or subtractions as necessary. As for the health of new planted trees, a few months ago, we changed our bond requirements that we come back and do a tree inspection six months later to make sure that the tree is alive. So we do, and if the tree does die, then the person resident is required to replace it with a different tree, a second tree. So we do have a mechanism in place because we realize that some trees might not last and now there's no tree. So to get the bond back, we have that requirement now. So we, we beat you to it, B.
Maybe, maybe we speak to the arborist because when I was at the New York, every time I regard, you always had to let a tree go through.
I didn't need, when I was at the New York Botanical Park.
We used to have to make a tree go through a full seasonal cycle, which is a year. Because six months, if you plant the tree in April and you check it in September, yeah, it's great. But then the following April, that tree could be dead. So it really should go through an entire seasonal change before you can determine whether or not the tree is, is a solid asset. So we may want to look at whether or not it should be a year.
We can consider it, just as, just as the feedback is, we have enough residents who complain about us holding on to their bond for six months.
Well, how it's posted or not.
Right. So asking now them for doing it for a year, I, I think that's, we're gonna get a lot of pushback. Listen, before we had.
How much is the bond?
Thousand dollars per tree.
So we had, people want their money. So we had no retention previously. Now we have six months. I say let's let it go for another six months a year. And if we need to discuss it then, I, I don't want to start changing that now.
I don't think people take out, like, little building house, they take out live trees, complain at all. They have no understanding. They want to take out a live tree. The people who are really limited to the people who are having to replace it.
I would also add that on the Architecture Review Committee, whenever there's a new build, a new town, new build, we heavily encourage front yard trees, even if they have to be in the right-of-way, I guess. In particular, the street trees, oak and red maple are the ones that we normally recommend. I think we should all get on the same page for that with the arborists. I mean, that generally is what Ann would have, would have led us to believe or some of the, some of the landscape architects that we deal with on the board, on the committee. So, but it would be good to, to kind of wrap the ball around this now that we're heading in this direction.
Okay.
So for example, I, I, I look at plants of houses that are new builds and we go around me and invariably they have red maples or else, but they don't plant those. We recommend them and they're on the plan, but they, they plant the cherry tree or they plant some.
Right. We discourage, I mean, we don't discourage from ornamentals, but we tell them that, that the ornamentals can't be the only, especially on the, on the streets.
But they are.
Well, I think, I think there, we maybe need to be more forceful about IA policy and then whatever.
Yeah. There's a recommendation that you guys put, that's really.
It's not a recommendation. It's a, it's a, it's a UHA rule we keep in mind. You don't get a permit unless you give this bond. However, and this is just, you know, fruits of the book, in this village and in many villages, we require tree for tree. If you're taking down a massive oak, one little tree, whether it starts out at two and a half inches or four and a half inches, doesn't matter, it's just gonna look so puny in comparison. So, and I think a lot of villages moved to these two, two and a half inch trees because they are, as a lender supposedly, they survive better than bigger tree or.
Yep.
So the survival rate and ten, twenty years down the road, you have this term.
I don't think we're talking about that. We're talking about species.
Yeah, species.
Well, it has a species. We took out, what was removed was all the diseased trees, everything that are not surviving. It doesn't mean they can't be more organic. It's a recommended list, not a recommendation of what a choice. There's no choice. And recommended list requires, you know, if you want to plant anything else, you know, you have to check with the arborist. We're making sure that it's gonna, it's a swap.
But B, you know how I can help you out here? Those funds that we're gonna collect for this, we're gonna put in a, we're gonna reserve it into a tree fund. Those trees that we plant, we will err on the side of the more native trees. So we'll, we'll use those funds to do that at least. So at least that's good. We'll revitalize our street tree planting program where hopefully we can select these types of trees. And what we're gonna plant in our islands and in the park, we'll use more native trees. So I, I hear you. I definitely, and actually, if you stay to the end of the meeting, I want to talk to you about the, the strip by you.
I want to talk to you.
Yeah, so we'll talk at the, we'll talk at the end. I definitely want to speak to you about that.
And this is Gary. I do agree that, I think it, because it's such a sensitive issue, trees, the board as well as residents, I do think it needs to be, and this is the way it is. And when we make exceptions, then it's supposed to be like that. But that's what, B, that not happen all the time. You know, I would just think it needs to be more concrete. And when we make exceptions like this, people have robust trees.
I can, if you approve a plan, then they should stick to the plan, I would think. You know, then if there's a maple tree on the plan, they shouldn't be planting something else. So that's my recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have questions? That being said, I would like to first make a motion for our SEACRA resolution. Right, Jeff? Get it right today. For the purposes of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SEACRA, I move that the village be identified as lead agency and that this action be deemed a type-two action under SEACRA, having no significant impact on the environment, and that as such, no further actions required on SEACRA. Can I have a second for that? I think I heard, was it Gary?
Yep.
That would be Trustee Rodowski. All in favor for the SEACRA resolution?
Aye.
Secondly, I would like to make a motion to pass Proposed Local Law H 2025 Tree Remediation. Do I have a second for that?
I'm seconding.
I think I heard Frank first. So that'd be Deputy Mayor Janice. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Excellent.
Obstention. It's clear.
Because?
I can't hear you.
In this case, you, that would, I don't think in an abstention, you can abstain, but I don't think there's a.
We have enough, we have enough, right? I'm all for it, but I'm gonna abstain from it. It's much clearer that way.
Okay. All right. So it's one, two, three, four, five in favor, one abstentions. Second item on the list is Proposed Local Law J, which we are not voting on tonight, we'll vote next month on our sports court. amend Chapter 212 Tennis in Other Courts. As we previously discussed, the village code does not adequately address the location and use of sports courts. By updating our code, we can prevent potentially, potential quality of life issues for neighbors who would join any proposed sports court, like a very noisy basketball court or pickleball court or any other things that make lots of noise at ungodly hours. Any other, any, ah, sorry, any trustees have any questions on this? I think we addressed the issues that we had in the past, so I think we're good. Anybody from the public have any questions on this? That being, no, I'm going, what? Oh, I'm sorry, Peter.
I had some, just some thoughts maybe for consideration.
Sure.
So we do have Chapter 212, which is our chapter tennis and other courts that we, I was thinking we could, we could consider modifying. Currently, that just refers to definitions of tennis court and an elevator court, which could be like a platform tennis.
Right.
So my thought was we could, we could modify that and include definitions of sports court, which would include pickleball, basketball, whatever other courts we might apply to the term sports court into that. Also currently, that section requires any, any of those courts to go before the trustees as a special exception permit. I, I think that was the intention when this was first initiated. It seems to go back to 2004. So again, if we can include sports courts in the definitions here, they have a setback, it's requirement there of a minimum of 20 feet side and rear. We may reconsider that, maybe 25 feet to that. There's mentioned a fencing for the tennis court being as high as 10 feet. I don't know that we want, and, and I'm looking at tailoring this perhaps.
Correct.
Maybe for, for other courts, pickleball and others, we don't, we don't go to that height. We comply with the current code, which may be a five-foot or six-foot, if they have a pool kind of code. So that's what I was thinking on that. We do in our code, those, any courts, including it does list sports courts and basketball courts are included in coverage. So that's a limitation by our zoning now. And the only zone that tennis or other courts are allowed in currently is an R1.
Right.
So one thought would be, we could leave it at that, could leave it as an R1. Being any others, because smaller lots are gonna be difficult, meaning setbacks and coverage and so forth, make that a zoning issue. It would go to zoning and then have to come, then finally to trustees at that special exception permit. That was my thoughts on, on the direction. And that's kind of based on, on some of the history of how tennis courts and other courts were first looked at by the village.
Right. That seems reasonable. If you and Jeff can converse sooner than later so that we have adequate time to get this on our desks before next board meeting, we can digest it for next month.
Okay.
Okay. Because that's, that's kind of what we discussed previously.
I'm, I'm asking the boards, that, that seems.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I, I think to keep peace and quiet and goodwill between neighbors. It's a smart move.
Yeah. I think as we mentioned before, there's certainly a concern, other communities about pickleball being allowed sport with the, the quacking and so forth. Other, other municipalities have done, you know, specific codes for that, greater setbacks and some even require continuation blankets around the fence on those.
My, my club requires, they have like some sort of silent paddles or something.
They do. They have quieter paddles.
They have quieter paddles and stuff like that. Because the courts sit next to the first hole and they don't want the doctors being.
Yeah.
Although that, any excuse is usually a good one, but.
All right. I'm, I'm open to all suggestions. So if you and Jeff want to work together on this, then put them all in and we can discuss next month and hopefully move forward. And the, if there's no other questions, I'll move forward. And the last public hearing we're gonna have is on Proposed Local Law K, Regulate Trees and Planting Materials in the Right-of-Way. To improve road safety for our children, walkers, bikers and drivers, the village needs to ensure that greenery, including bushes, shrubs, plants and trees, are not planted or growing the village's right-of-way. This greenery can restrict sightlines at corners and prevent pedestrians from having a safe place to get off the street if need be. Village code and policy needs to be updated to specify where greenery may not be located. And as we discussed previously, what you plant today might be great, but three to five years down the road, when your shrubs get very large, there's gonna be a problem. And with certain types of shrubs, if you cut them back too far, they become very brown and then the residents get very upset about it. But again, this is all for public, public safety. I'll look to the right. Do I have any questions from the right side? I'm gonna wait for AJ to say something.
No, this is a good idea.
Okay. Gary? You got that. You got the look. You want to say something?
So what is, are we getting to guidelines here or what's?
I have, I have a draft.
Okay.
I, I can distribute, but I can read it first?
Yeah, read it.
Okay. So this, this would be under our property maintenance, Section 172.3. We have an area about right-of-ways and, and responsibility maintenance. So I've added, this is G2, I'm proposing. Visibility at intersections. On a corner lot, no hedge or other planting more than three feet in the height shall be erected, placed, maintained in the triangular area formed by the intersecting streets at a straight line, joining said streets at points which are 30 feet distance from the point of intersection, measured all of said street parts. So 30 feet back from the corner. The height of three feet shall be measured above the road surface because sometimes we have, we have rises and, oh, it's three feet above that and six feet.
Right.
This subsection does not apply to existing trees, provided that, some trees are closer than that, provided that no branches are closer than six feet to the ground. So again, that would provide the visibility at the corners. So that's, that's, that's taken from another village, similar. And then, and then also, we do have, in addition to that, we have the, some plantings, people are going right up to the edge of the road. So a simple thing, adding under 172.3 H, where we have, it refers to clearance between sidewalks, but we don't have sidewalks. You want the pedestrians to be able to walk if needed to get off the road. So I just said, all areas within four feet of the edge of the road, gutter or curb, shall be cleared of any planting or other obstructions that they will not obstruct the passage of pedestrians. Simple as that. That's a suggestion.
I'm sorry, how, how far?
Four feet. I mean, the, our right-of-way is, is usually more than that. It could be eight, 10, 12 feet, you know, but I think that as a minimum to be able to, if you're walking along with your dog or something, the car's coming, you want to get off the road or a bicycle needs to, you know, something just to get off, get off the road in, in a clear space that's in our right-of-way.
Unless there are giant boulders there.
Well, that.
Which seems to be rampant.
You could take that as an obstruction.
Yeah, we've been having this conversation for as long as I've been on the board. About those rocks.
No, I just, with addressing my, my house, is at the bottom of Alpine Drive. And there used to be rocks trimming across the front of the house. And they're replacing the bushes because they could have looked nicer. But they're there so that if somebody comes downhill, they don't go into my living room. So that's why I wanted to know how far four feet, you know, you just said four feet, so. I'll be, I'll be out there measuring tonight how far my bushes are from the curb line at my house. Because that may or may not influence my decision on whether I agree with this trust or not. But I'm seriously, because a lot of homes on my, my block are at the bottom of the hill, people have put things up there, whether they be stone or, like, we have a tree right in the middle of our yard, which if you, when you're sitting in my living room, you see the tree highlighted by the headlights because the tree was obviously put there. So if a car came straight down the hill, it'd hit the tree before they'd hit the humans. But that's not anyone close to four feet to the, but.
Yeah, I, I, it was meant to be trees, you know. I mean, I get the thing about tree, you know, tree.
No, I understand.
You want to say.
I understand.
So I, again, it's just up for discussion.
Why don't we? Get that to Jeff. Jeff will create it into a local law, send it to us in time that we can digest this for the next board meeting. Yes, Gary?
No, I think, I think we're on the right path. Thank you for, for putting that together. Sounds good. There has been an issue of pedestrian safety and, and people not actually using the proper pedestrian etiquette of walking against traffic that I've heard from neighbors of like, why are people not eating that? So this whole idea about you know, being, having pedestrian safety in mind, I think we need to just reiterate.
We, we can, I will not legislate it. We can.
Yeah, I'm, that's a reminder.
We, we can, if you want to draft something and I can put in our newsletter, please do so. Put it on the website. Yes. I, I'm all.
It's one of those things where it bears a reminder, just like recycling and all the other.
I am awful reminding people of that if you want to craft something.
All right.
Questions on the left? Questions from the audience? B, we're gonna cut some bushes down. Is that okay?
Maybe they're invasives.
We just want to be safe. All right. No questions. I'm gonna make a motion to continue this to the November 3rd Board of Trustees Meeting. Yes, because I forgot to do it for the previous one. Thank you for catching. Do I have a motion for J and K at the November 3rd Board Meeting? I'll make the motion. Sorry, you have a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Trustee Frankel. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. I'm gonna make a motion to end the public hearing portion of our meeting, seconded by. Thank you, Ms. Dorfman. All right. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Bye, Wendy. Get out. All right. I'm gonna change gears and I'm gonna move our LOSEP presentation from the Roslyn Highlands Hook and Ladder. Rich, what's your last name? Because I never say it right. T O C C I. Excellent. Welcome to our meeting. Rich is here to discuss with the board. The Roslyn Fire Department's wish to increase, increase their LOSEP, which stands for Length of Service Awards Program.
Yep, sir.
Got me good. Their benefits, and I guess the hope is to increase retention and to help recruit more firefighters. So the floor is yours, sir.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions before I start? Okay. I'm just gonna try my best to give you a little history of background of what's going on in that state. In 2019, at first, this LOSEP program went into effect in 1997. We are currently at $20 a month with 30 years. So just keep those two figures, $20 a month and 30 years. In 2019, they raised, the New York State, because of the lack of recruitment, the lack of retention, they raised the amount you could truly sponsor from 600 to 1,200, okay? You can go from 700 to 1,200. That was approved by, you know, state and Cuomo. And in September 14th, 2021, Cuomo signed into law that you can increase it up to 50 years. Now, I'll give you an example of why. It was a couple of years, I'm 75 years old, okay? And we have numbers that have been numbers of 30, 40 years and so forth. We got in a truck one afternoon and the youngest guy in the truck was 65 years old. Okay, so we had 360 years of experience. Thank God it wasn't a fire, real fire, but we probably were in a little trouble. But how many ago was to get anybody out of the building, hours a year or the house? And then, help could be on display. So what we're asking for, in order to recruit and retain and increase it to $30 a month, not 70 or, just $10 more a month, and increase it from 30-ish to 50-ish. Okay? I did a little figuring on it and I went through the 2023 consensus of how many taxpayers each municipality has. And I figured it, I moved, I added a walking ladder and I divided it into the amount of increase, I think it was 170,000 increase or 140,000. I can't remember. I'm gonna look at the chart. It's 140,000 dollar difference. The amount it would cost each taxpayer would be like $14 a month. Now, I did not include, and that's a year, that's a $14 a year. I did not include the Calhoun Hesper, which has approved to go forward. And the amount, he said, whatever your municipalities desire upon, they're in there. They'll go with. Okay, so I didn't even count his contribution because they're the largest contributor to the program. So that would bring the cost down quite a bit. Any of this, my figures go off a little bit, but none of the folks, it still would be somewhere in the ballpark, I think, between 12 and 14 dollars a year. So I don't think that's asking a lot. I think it's needed in the community because this firefighting is not like it used to be. I mean, young kids have to go through more, more training than you could ever imagine. It's not just fuck with flies out. It's going to active shooting. Some laws, we have to protect ourselves against an active shooter. Biological warfare, so it's totally not the same. It's not just going into a house and helping people out. It's, you're not even aware that you're gonna get shot. I mean, and I don't know if you watch, I watch the news every day. Firefighters are actually getting shot, you know, that you're helping people. It was an EMS worker, not too long ago, tried to help somebody on the street. And he went out to help him, they got stabbed to death. I mean, so it's a crazy world we live in. So all I'm asking for is you're okay on it, to vote on it? I see you're smiling, so. I'm very happy. Anybody have any questions at all?
I'm glad to hear because for the board's sake, when I was at the last Roslyn Low Sap meeting, there was, I think, five different options and it wasn't really clear what the fire department was asking for because there was always, there's a whole menu of years and then dollars. So that, yes, that table. So which, on the chart, what number is that? Is that four? That's the last one? Okay.
Okay, and it's, it's 140,000.
That's option eight. Okay. And I have this. Actually, you know what? Let me hold. I have it, but this way I was, I can draw. I don't know what, I don't know what the Port Low Sap.
There was an increase also.
Right. Well, no, that's different. So what Rich hasn't brought up yet is even if the Flower Hill Board says we're interested in option eight or one of the other options, this has to go to a referendum by all of the Flower Hill Roslyn voters. Then subsequent referendums have to be held at every other participating village, including the town, and that referendum has to pass every single one. If it fails a single village, this doesn't have to.
Why is this different than the Port Washington?
That, I don't, no, that's, that's.
We didn't, we don't have to do any of it. It's, it's basically.
This is the, no, this is the, that's, I think it's very different. I, I don't participate as much in Port. You do.
Yeah.
But this is to change the low sap plan. The only way to do it is by referendum.
And everyone has to agree.
Yeah.
And this, this would make the job so difficult.
You gotta get everyone on board.
Right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put out in the evening tomorrow and I'll copy it in yourself and Marla.
Yes.
And you can send it on to every, you know, folks. Where we're actually at right now.
Right.
Okay, as far as, one holdout last year was Roslyn, the village of Roslyn. But he's, he has changed, turned around completely. So he's, so I believe that everybody should be on board, but I'm gonna double check.
I, I think, reading your article, I'm not sure that Roslyn Harbor voted in favor of it yet, did they?
They're, they're still deciding.
Right, so.
Exactly.
Not everybody's on board yet. People might be indicating, but I, I just know from reading the article last month, last week. Right.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be a little bit more specific. Exactly right. They agreed to, to.
Consider.
To it.
Yes.
And to vote on it at the initial, the consider, the increase.
So I, I. I'll, I'll let board members ask questions, but from my perspective, I think I have enough information. I can, whenever you want to forward tomorrow, I'll forward to the board and we can digest it for next month.
And again, the biggest contributor is the Calhoun Hesper.
Right.
And they're on board. I mean, he's definitely on.
Well, they're on board to move it forward to a referendum.
Oh, yeah, well, and the referendum obviously has to be 60, 40 outcome. It's not a 50, 50 split. 60% of the people who vote have to vote to save the election. So it's really up to the taxpayers.
Right.
It's really not up to me, you know, it's up to us to agree on, on a number and to go forward, but it's really up to the taxpayers to decide.
So it's kind of.
I have a few in the, in the house right now, so.
We got a few up here, too.
And I don't think it's very, it would be much of an increase. And I look at the amount of money that goes to the library, $5,000 a year. They just, just move a little bit for a year to get this thing going. It would be a home run, I mean, to everybody. But that's not, we are not showing that stuff, you guys.
But so, so I think this is, is excellent for retention of current members. Are you telling me that this is an active tool for recruiting?
Absolutely. Because, because what happens when, when we get a new recruit, this is, this is a selling point now. So if you put, spend 50 years of us, you're gonna end up with $1,500 or whatever, whatever the number is.
Right.
Okay, so it's more, it's, it's a, it's an incentive to get more. And we're not, kids don't want to be firefighters today. I, you know, they're into telephones, they're, whatever. They're denying to taking care of the community like we used to. It's totally different. Now we have to rely on the, the 30-year-old guys, 35-year-old men to come on board. And we, you know, we're working on it. But again, you need an incentive.
Right.
And the incentive is you have to pay just a little bit to make it attractive.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify for the public, that's all, that it's, it's retention and it's also recruiting, because I think the recruiting is probably the most important part of the fire department right now, because I know the fire, the age is getting older and we need more participants.
I'm just here.
It's all over. No, I'm just talking about in general.
In April, they had a, you know, Chatball News, Omaha had a, a weekend for recruitment, a day for recruitment.
Right.
So.
Yeah, Port's doing a recruitment event this Saturday or Sunday. And I know you guys do them every soften as well. I just happened to see the Facebook posting. All right, if there's no other questions, I will get all the data from you through Marla to me and then I'll send it to the board and then we can decide next month how we want to proceed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Sorry to keep you from your board meeting today.
No problem.
All right, I'm gonna pivot to public comment. Other than B, does anybody want to speak? But you and I are gonna speak afterwards, so we're good.
Yes.
All right, to the normal portion of our meeting, I'd like to make a motion to approve the September 2025 minutes from the Board of Trustees. Does anybody have any questions on the minutes?
There's like, there is a typo. They have Deputy Mayor Frankel led the.
Led the legions. Great honor.
How's our speed gun doing?
Well, Frank, I didn't want to tell you this, but Max, can you switch seats?
How's our speed gun doing? Did we get any tickets?
There's training that's going on shortly so that all the officers can qualify to use it. Perhaps I can lend you.
Yeah, fast I can.
I can lend you the.
My bike.
Yes. All right, other than that one change that Max is now demoted from Deputy Mayor back to trustee, I'm gonna make the motion to approve these minutes. Someone wants a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, former Deputy Mayor Frankel. All in favor? All right.
Those are short term.
Short-lived. That's true. Yes. All right, I'd like, I'm going to make a motion to approve the October 2025 disbursements, As always, I have reviewed all the disbursements. So has the departments requesting it. Are there any questions from the board members on this? All right, I'm gonna make that motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Trust, Deputy Mayor, new Deputy Mayor, I don't know, Denise. All in favor? Except for Max, who will do the normal extension. Perfect. We had the low sap presentation.
Oh, wait, just going to the financials. So the CDs are doing good, it looks like. Yeah?
Yes.
They have to million dollars and then.
And Suzanne and I are going to make a recommendation for some additional.
Yeah.
Change of monies. Yes.
They're decent interest rates. Better than what we were doing with the money. So I mean, this is a huge plus.
Yes, and we have some more cash that we can start investing accordingly. We'll be doing that very soon. I need to, I'm gonna make a motion to pass our 2025, 2026 court audit. There is nothing in the audit that screams out of any irregularities, so. Sorry?
It's a resolution.
Yes, what did I say? I'm gonna make a motion to pass the resolution. Yes, so I'll make.
I think it's last one.
That was, no, that was the court grant.
Oh.
This is the court audit. I felt for the same trip.
Why does it say that the board was polled this fall? We didn't, we weren't polled on this.
No, she writes this ahead of time and then she's gonna poll the board and then she's going to write what everybody says.
Right, it was the.
This is written in advance so that Marla can write. I, 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 nay, 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 abstain, abstain, abstain. So I'm going to make this motion to approve this resolution, authorizing the 2025, 2026 court audit. Do I have a second? I hear trustee, I heard trustee Dorfman first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have any abstentions? No, good, just checking. Aha, other new business. So I don't have anything written on this, but we're gonna have something for next month. I would like us to amend our code, section 119 on fence requirements. That section of the code allows, that section of the code allows residents to appeal to the Board of Trustees for a decorative fence in the front yard. The, the most recent requests would never the intention of the board at the time. I spoke to one of the board members who was responsible for editing that code eons ago and it was really primary, like post and rail. It didn't, wasn't the intention for gates. It was purely decorative. And I think times are changing and I don't think this is something that belongs in the Board of Trustees' hands. It belongs in zoning where I think these types of things do belong. And by shaking his head, Mr. Alkensky agrees with me. So next month, we will have a public hearing to, the first public hearing to discuss amending sec, code section 119 to remove the decorative fence portion, Board of Trustees, out of the code so that that just falls into things that the zoning board would want to do. And I think we're gonna change one or two definitions as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, Ms. Dorfman?
Question of definitions as well, for sure.
Yes, and Peter's busily working on it. So we'll have that for next month. So can I have a, I'm gonna make the motion to hold the public hearing at the November 3rd Board of Trustees' meeting to discuss this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wodowski. All in favor? Excellent. Our building superintendent is here, so, sorry, I'm thinking next one. ARC report, please.
Sure. September 29th, ARC meeting. We have prime applications. Only two are here before you for approval. 28 Wood Valley with the rear addition new front porch, exterior alterations. That was a big return. We had some, a couple of comments. Actually, since submitted those and we're recommending approval of that application. And then going down the list to 45 Birch Lane, that's a new single-family residence. That's on a, what was a second lot that had a sports court on it. People told us off, they did a subdivision there. So there's a new house. We had one, one or two minor comments on that and we're recommending that, that goes forward.
Have you looked at the landscape plan? We're gonna have nice trees there, because B's right behind you and you don't want to make her mad, Peter.
Yeah, and, and I think it's, it's what they have to look at.
Okay.
They had some tree removal and we also did discuss this, as Gary mentioned, request for some sweet plant.
Which one is this?
Birch, 45 Birch.
That was a little bit better. It's a massive.
Yeah.
Okay. So one of our arborists will look at it. Okay, wonderful. Are there any questions from, oh, are you done with the report? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions from any of the trustees? Any questions from anyone in the public?
Just on three over hill, what color this month, for sheer curiosity, what color was proposed? It wasn't, I'm just curious, what color for the style of the house?
Well, the.
It was like a pink house.
Easy answer. The color was sort of a, sort of, I call it a khaki brown that didn't work with the roof, or brown. And then it was dark on top and we had light brick on the bottom. That was part of the discussion we had, if you don't feel it suited. And then we're using, you know, like a wide board and batting, which we didn't tell, went with the style of the house. So there was a number of issues we had. I think they since sort of withdrew it, because they're not gonna do it for a while. I'm curious. Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions from the board or the public, I will make a motion to, I guess, approve 28 Wood Valley, approved with conditions, and 45 Birch, approved with conditions. Correct, Peter? It's two.
Yes.
All right, so I'm making that motion. Would someone like to second it? Thank you, Mr. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Gary will be abstaining as always, is the custom. Thank you. You have the DPW report in front of you. Now, Rich is at school. He's upstate Lake Classic, Lake George.
Lake George.
Thank you. I knew it's one lake. He's doing his annual highway school training, which is great. But I have some good information on our paving schedule. So starting this Wednesday, October 8th, they will start milling Stonetown all the way from the Port Washington Water District to the end of our village. They're also working with Plandome Manor so that there will be one nice, long contiguous newly paved road on Stonetown all the way to the train station. The plan is to mill on Wednesday and to start paving Thursday and/or Friday. So the hope is by the weekend, we have a brand-new road. Shortly thereafter, the road will be restriped to put the new double-direction bike lane on the south side of the road. And we will also have the truck that comes in that does the grooved in the road, the recessed groove, because I have to call it the right thing. Subsequently, I don't have dates for the Ridge Drive East, Ridge Drive West area or Country Club Brookside, but they committed that they will get it done by the end of October. And as soon as we get a date from the paving company, we will. And as soon as we get a date from the paving company, we will send out an email notification to everybody so they could be aware of those roads because there might be road closures and people need to keep their cars off the roads those days. Does anybody have questions on the, finally, the paving is happening in Flower Hill?
So the pavement will be done in front of the Water District property?
No.
No.
We're stopping short of the Water District.
I didn't quite get that. Okay.
Yes. Actually, on your drive home, if you want to go look on Stony Town, Rich put up two posts, one on each side, the yellow topped.
Yellow.
Yellow topped. You'll see where the paving will.
Okay, that, yeah, no, that makes sense.
The Water District still needs to do some work. And even if they finish the work, that road has not had time to settle because they just literally finished it.
Yeah.
End of last week. And we don't wanna pave on something that hasn't settled because then you'll know what happened.
I have questions about that building. I guess we'll save it to the end.
Well, if you wanna ask me questions that I won't have answers for, but you can ask.
Yeah, I thought we approved that it was gonna have some kind of siding on it. Is
so it's not finished yet?
Are they gonna put siding on it? They're just keeping it painted?
I think that's just waterproofing.
That's the plan that they had.
So.
Doesn't look like, it doesn't look like.
I have been told that they will follow the plan. And just remember, we didn't approve any plan. They, the Water District does not, it's a partnership. They worked with us, but they can kind of do what they wanna do. But they, all indications is they're gonna follow the plan that they shared with the village. And I do have some actually update on that.
It is big when you're in the park.
It is. Well, it, it has to be. The GAC tanks are.
Yeah, we have to.
You need a lot of head pressure.
Giant, giant.
They did deliver the, the car, the charcoal last week on Friday. So they're getting ready to do testing and they're gonna test the plant by the end of the year and they're looking for an online date of early twenty twenty six. And they're going to clean up our portion of the park and do replantings in early spring. Oh, here you go. They're finishing up with the roof and then start window and siding installation. So there you get your siding frame. That's the next thing on the thing. That's that. I'm gonna go pivot to my village attorney.
The board's only had three matters and then two were adjourned initially at the outset, and the third began and then it was passed over to the next day. So no action was taken by the boards. There's no reports.
Thank you. All right. Now I'm gonna pivot to me. Mayor's report. First of all, thank you, Marla and Rich, for a amazing touch a truck event.
It wasn't, it was unbelievable.
I cannot, for those people who weren't there, we conservatively guess we had at least five hundred people there, kids and adults.
We gave out all two hundred of the vests and the hats, right?
We, we, we went through the hats and the vests and the crayons and the coloring looks.
There were at least two hundred kids at first.
We couldn't tell how many people was, it was the first time we've ever done it. So I, I'm very, very, very happy with the turnout.
Did Mel run that ice cream?
Mel ran that ice, I think Mel, Mel did comment to me that he wished he knew that this was gonna be a bigger event because he brought the bigger ice cream truck.
Well, next year maybe we'll get a food truck too.
That is the goal. We, it was difficult to get people to want to participate because we couldn't forecast.
No, this year.
I couldn't, I couldn't. Listen, originally, if we had a hundred kids, I would have been incredibly happy, but the turnout was ridiculous.
Yeah, there were probably three hundred kids at total. I mean, I left a half hour before it ended.
It just, people, as, as the trucks were leaving, kids were still coming. So for those of you who didn't go, we had, all the village equipment was out there. The kids got to climb on all that. The McGowan, the paving company brought a big dump truck. The Water District brought a, brought a big dump truck. Mike's towing.
Yeah, that was crazy.
A double axle wrecker. They have a triple axle wrecker with a crane. Unfortunately, he didn't bring that one. That would have been good with the crane.
A half a million dollar dump truck.
The other one was like seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's a mega truck. We Care brought their bucket truck and then the police went above and beyond. We had two horse, we had the tank with emergencies service, emergency services truck.
Two police cars.
Two police cars.
Motorcycle and motorcycle.
And two motorcycles and the kids got to climb the motorcycles. And I was gonna say thank you to our friends at the hospital. They sent an ambulance.
Oh, cool. Not only did the kids get to climb, but the deputy mayor is pictured sitting on the motorcycle.
Sorry?
Oh, mask.
So.
And the great thing was the cops, the cops were so great with explaining stuff to the kids, letting them, putting the sirens on, the lights on.
Right.
Which I also have a picture of the deputy mayor doing that.
Okay.
I think I had more fun than half the kids.
I, I actually do believe that you had more fun than your grandson, but that's okay.
But the one, the one comment that the ESU cop said that it's, you know, it's nice to, to, you know, once in a while be looked at as, you know, the, the friend and not, you know, the way some people view police these days. So it was great. The kids.
No, I was very excited. And this is the beginning of a new Flower Hill tradition. Marla and I are already plotting, plotting and planning on next year's touch a drive event. And then we're gonna do some other events, I think, throughout the year. So we gotta plot and plan and figure that out. And if anyone has any ideas, great. All right. Other things in the world of me. The Webster Avenue Long Island Railroad Bridge reopened. Congratulations.
Yeah, like the, the Beatles take off on the three of you guys.
Yes. Well, unfortunately, the, the Long Island Railroad was tied up, they were tied up with the Ryder Cup, so they weren't able to do a formal opening. So Marisika and Supervisor Desen and I did our own informal bridge opening. And shockingly, and thank you, Long Island Railroad, this project came in ahead four months earlier than expected and seven point three million dollars under budget. So I know.
And the bridge looks great.
And the bridge, and the road looks great.
It looks great.
The sightlines are amazing.
I'm gonna sleep without the sound.
The vibrating plate is gone, the sightlines are there.
I like this ring in this.
No, they, they did, they did a phenomenal job. I actually got to meet with Commissioner Ryder at an event last week. He gave us an update on everything to do with the Ryder Cup and he gave us a whole big dissertation on his trip to Israel where he got a very important security briefing and training from Israeli forces there. So that was really impressive of all the work that Commissioner Ryder is doing to make him a better commissioner. Next on my list. Here's an interesting one. Public health notice. As of today, our friends in the Nassau County Department of Health will be throwing down throughout the north shore of Nassau, including portions of Flower Hill between today and the tenth, rabies bait, rabies vaccine baits. So there's the little teeny look packets and inside is the vaccine because there is a large increase of rabies in raccoons. So the raccoons will eat it. It's, guess it smells like fish. They like it. They get a nice little vaccine dose of anti-rabies stuff. And if you see it, don't touch it. It's not gonna kill you, but don't touch it.
We found it was really hard giving them shots in the arm, so they.
We have a lot of anti-vax, we have a lot of anti-vax raccoons. It's terrible. So if anybody sees them, just kick them into the bushes or pick them up with gloves. Don't let your kids eat it. So Claire, don't let your kids eat them. And if, and if a dog.
Being so close to the road, I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to kick it that far away.
There you go. Wait, how are they distributing them? Helicopter? I, they didn't say how they were distributing them. They're going to be dispersed. So the Department of Health did not mention if it's helicopter, if it was throwing. I, I don't know. I don't know.
Are dogs and cats worth notifying or is that?
Well, it's in the newsletter, so people are notified accordingly. We'll, we'll do something about that.
Well, it's probably good because then they would be vaccinated.
I already discussed the Stony Town Road Water Update beautification. So thank you to the Highway Department for clearing off the islands. And I don't have a date, but do we have a date yet of when we're gonna replant? There you go, sixteenth and seventeenth. We're gonna, weather depending is when we're going to beautify those three islands. So that's good. I know they went today to buy a couple more, what's my favorite tree? Yeah, crepe myrtles. So we're, we're slowly getting everything ready to do the replants. We have a coat drive going on through the fifteenth, so please don't need coats. Pharmaceutical Takeback Day, Port Washington Water District on October twenty fifth. And I think I got all of my updates. Did I miss something, Marla?
Yes.
Do I have a, any trustees' reports?
I just have a general question.
I said reports, I didn't say questions.
I don't know.
Okay, do we have any trustee questions?
Does the federal government's shutdown affect us in any way as an option?
I think that remains to be seen in terms of what the federal government gives to the county, gives to state, et cetera, being in Europe going the way. And we'll see grants. I would imagine, I don't know what that would be affected.
Yeah, I think I was trying to be a little more specific. Are there things that we, we accounted for, say, in the next month or two that if that state shut down, we're not gonna get any money?
Not that I've heard of. The only thing we really count on a state level of chips, reimbursements, which is the salary highway, homework. I haven't heard that yet, so no. I'm gonna stay over there.
Does that, is there any federal money in the chips or is that, is there, in other words, does the state collect money from the redistributed?
I assume they do, but I, I don't know.
So as of now, AJ, all well in Flower Hill, while the federal government is shut down. But if there's any issues, I'll keep you posted.
I don't think the entire village is gonna go to hell in a handbasket, but I.
It might.
I have involved in some other agencies where the loss of the federal funds is a serious issue.
Fortunately, we have healthy reserves that should hold us through any, any shutdown, unless the government shuts down for holy eternity. But I think, I think we can, I think we can weather it.
And we have bigger problems than that.
True. All right. I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session to briefly discuss a potential legal matter. So can I get a second for that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. B, don't, you can sit in the other cot, go, yes, sit, turn, we'll turn the lights on for you. We're going, it'll be like five minutes.
And I'll say goodnight.
Oh, you can add.